Yeah, y'all good? That looks like something we all want to be doing.
Oh, thank you, your name?
What? Push those weights?
Yeah, I used to do that, but for some reason it makes me real tired now.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have that, I don't have the energy level I used to have.
Long stuff makes me tired now, doesn't it?
Yeah, just thinking about it can make me tired sometimes.
You don't really have a big Texas idea.
Waiting on her to get the computer set up. The laptop. Soon as she gives us a signal, we're on then.
We're gonna stay on daylight saving time all year.
Okay.
Something like that.
Let's do it then. I think we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance and the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and all your many blessings. We thank you for each one who's here, Lord. We ask now, as we conduct your business, that you'd help us, Lord, to do it wisely and in the best interest of our citizens. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Matt, you got announcements, Forrest?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have a request to continue on a couple of items. If you'd like to take those individually to approve a continuance.
Yes, sir.
The first one is item number one, the Dune Island Regional Beach Access Small-Scale Amendment. Staff request that this item be continued to the April 12, 2018 Planning Commission meeting at 5:00 PM in this location.
Okay. Motion. You got them? Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Thanks, sir. And then we have a request to continue on item number six, which is one of our quasi-judicial items, the Sacred Heart Water Sound Origins Project. We have a request to continue to the April 12, 2018 Planning Commission meeting at 5:00 PM at this location.
Motion to continue. Second? Okay. Got a motion and a second? Did you get them carried? Who's second? Got it now? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. What else you got, Matt?
As all of these following items are quasi-judicial, if we're ready to move into that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to swear, man?
Yes. Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of the items left on the agenda, if you would, stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? When you come forward, if you would, just state and state your first name and last name and spell your last name for the record, and also state that you've been sworn in. Have there been any ex parte communications on any of the agenda items? Have any of you received any ex parte communications from any?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys have an ex parte communication form? We can get one for you.
I don't have one.
Okay. We'll make sure we get that for you so you can fill it out. Would those ex parte communications affect your decision-making on any of these items?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Matt?
Yes, sir. The first item we have tonight under our quasi-judicial agenda is the Topsail Development and Regional Impact Essentially Built-Out Agreement. This is a request to approve by agreement with Walton County of an essentially built-out agreement pursuant to Chapter 380.0615G Florida statutes. The project has been reviewed by Renee Bradley. It's a major development order application submitted by Lino Maldonado as agent for and on behalf of the Topsail Group, requesting approval of an agreement between Walton County and the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, the applicant and the owners of property within the Topsail DRI, which is, are identified in the agreement. The Topsail DRI is approximately 52 acres within the coastal center future land use category. The application does not request approval of any physical development at this time. The Topsail Group, Inc. is the owner of the parcel number that is in your report. I believe the applicant is here and is prepared to present their case.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, might we move one more chair over to the table here?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, my name is Jesse Rigby. I'm an attorney from the Clark Partington Law Firm. I represent the Topsail Group, want to, and also represent the owner of parcel 621, which is C&amp;E Coastal LLC. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Lino Maldonado. He's the representative of the client. Mr. Maldonado is the Vice President of Wyndham Vacation Reynolds North America. And he also represents the other entities that are listed in the agreement, with the exception of I&amp;M Development. I&amp;M Development is represented by Mr. John Dowd Jr., their attorney. What, I, I hope you've had an opportunity to, of course, review the agreement. And I don't want to spend much time, but I want to kind of go over it to be sure hopefully everybody understands kind of what we're seeking today. And again, as Mr. Carpenter said, there is no request to approve any particular development. The Topsail DRI goes back to 1982. All the infrastructure, all of the developers' obligations was, were completed years ago. And the last major development there was more than 10 years ago. It would be when the Tides condominium was high-rise condominium was built, probably in the late 90s, early 2000s. But we're at the end of that DRI. And the state statute allows for this essentially built-out agreement. And effectively, what it does, it takes a snapshot of what entitlements exist that are not yet built out. And we will cover those very briefly. What this does, this agreement is entered into between the county and DEO and the applicants who still have entitlement rights there that could be developed. What it will do is allow that to be an enforceable agreement. It locks that in, and it, I believe, helps staff so they don't have to continue to come to the board. Now, if the development is a major development, it would still, of course, go before the county commission. It does not exempt any future development from meeting all of the county's land development requirements, with one exception, which I'll mention. But they'll still have to come forward and show they have water, sewer, that they comply with the stormwater drainage plan, and there's still capacity in the drainage plan at the time of their development. They'll have to make sure they meet all the county requirements on parking, landscaping, and I probably have missed something. But all of those there, the only exception to that statement is in traffic concurrency. When the DRI was reviewed, and again initially, and then again about 10 years ago or so in the traffic study, all the traffic had already been evaluated and vested at the maximum development. So that aspect of it is vested. Again, this agreement does not increase any entitlements. It does allow for certain, I say adjustment, as where some of those might be used. And I know that you have a copy of the master plan in your package. Parcel 621 is the largest undeveloped parcel. It's immediately inside the gate to the left, behind what people know the Ocean Club. It has a development order on it, has had a development order since 2006. It was ready to be built, and then the economic downturn stopped everything. But that development order stayed alive, and then was amended by C&amp;E Coastal in 2016 to reduce the number of units from 114 to 78. They're one-bedroom units, and that's a requirement of the entitlement to that parcel. They have to be one-bedroom units. Parcel 622 is immediately adjacent, physically adjacent to the club parcel. And some of you may know where the club there is. It's kind of behind it. It's about a half acre. It has entitlements to 10 units. It also had a development order in 2006 that, over time, went away because of the crisis. 626 is the other vacant parcel. It's kind of butts up to the Tides parking lot on, I believe it's on the east side of the development. It's about three-quarters an acre. It has an entitlement to 15 residential units. The only other thing this agreement does is it recognizes the ability of, to move some of the commercial, and quite frankly, it's really non-residential entitlements that exist on the two parcels that sit on Highway 98, 608A and 608B. Those parcels will at some point be redeveloped just because of age. And there's a possibility of updating the club to make it, over the number of years, better for the product, better for all of the Topsail residents and all. And there may be a need for some other non-residential space, not commercial in the true sense of a business. But that commercial square footage has also been used for just meeting space and things of that nature at Topsail, and that's what would go in the club. I believe the only other aspect I haven't covered is this agreement would allow discretionary, there's no requirements here, but would allow the transfer of a maximum of five units from 621 up to 626, maximum five. And those would be, of course, one-bedroom units, because that's the entitlement on 621. And again, when that developer for 626 comes forward, they'll have to demonstrate that, of course, they can meet all the parking, they don't need variances and things of that nature.
Are you increasing that one from 15 to 20 at that point?
It, it allows it in this agreement, sir. It does not automatically increase it. What it does allow, though, and if this agreement is signed, is that if those owners reach agreement, quite frankly, they haven't even discussed it. But if they did, and we're trying to wrap everything into one document, we don't want to come back and have to ask to amend a contract, frankly. So we're trying to look at all the eventualities, some of which may never occur, but try to bring it in now and, and allow that option there. That does not mean that 20 units can go on 626. When it gets engineered, it, because there's a maximum height, there's four-story heights to all these units that have, all the properties that have not been developed, they may frankly not be able to meet parking requirements.
But their density on that unit will be 20 at that point?
It would, if it transfers made. It'll stay at, sitting at 15, but the agreement will allow that to occur. It, it does not increase the density, and of course, it would take away from 621 at that point. It doesn't add anything. Now, you'll see in the agreement, there are unused, there are two units on the Tides parcel that was never developed. It's not covered by this agreement, except in one fashion, but frankly, there's nowhere to put those two units. And they also have about 1,900 square feet of non-residential space that was not used at the Tides when it was developed. That's not owned by my client, it's not owned by the developer. It's either owned by the Tides Condominium Association or the developer of that project, and that's not an issue. What, we made sure the agreement, though, has a provision that we do not take away anything that somebody else might have. The practical matter is, there's nowhere to use those. Likewise, Captiva had entitlement, you'll still see on the master plan, entitlement to 12 units. If you've ever been in there, Captiva's absolutely built out. There's no room to do anything Captiva. We're not taking them away, because I don't believe we have the right to take them away. And it's clearly not anything that's owned by any of my clients. It just simply leaves them sitting there. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer your questions. And Mr. Maldonado, if you have questions, the more the technical nature of the project, he'll be best to answer those. And of course, John can speak for parcel 626 on.
Anybody got any questions? All right, thank you. All right, we'll open it up to public comments.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, before that, if we could enter the staff report into the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Quite frankly, it's our obligation, and I appreciate you mentioning that. It does need to be adopted in the evidence, there is evidence in the record.
All right, thank you. Robert Burress?
Yes. My name is Robert Burress, B-U-R-R-E-S-S. I have been an owner in, in Captiva since 1997. I am currently president of Captiva. But probably more importantly for this meeting, I am treasurer and secretary of the Topsail Master Association. I've been, since I've been here, I have been active consistently with both, with both the Master Association and the Captiva, because I have a great interest in the way the Topsail organization has come about and got developed. And I have a strong interest in making sure that any future development continues along that pattern, not something all of a sudden sticks up like a, like a big flag that's a problem. So that's really my reason for, for just wanting to comment. Like I said, I have been, I've been president of Captiva since probably as soon as the builder turned enough authority over to us, I was, I wasn't elected. And on the, on the Master Association, I've been on for not quite as long, but probably at least the last eight or nine years, so. The thing I have the biggest problem with was that we really did not get appropriate information on what is anticipated transpiring until just a couple days ago. So while I am not here to represent all of the presidents and board, which are board members of the Master Association, I can tell you that there is great consistency in come and find out what's going on. We don't know what it is, you know? We don't know what, we just don't know what to do. So I would be very in favor of if we just had a little bit more time, that we could understand what this is. The first real explanation that we got was from Brandon Berg, and that, after the original letter came out from, from the Topsail Group, and I, that was sent certified, and I received that at my home here in, in, in Captiva on the 21st. And the days that ensued up until just a couple days ago, we were trying to figure out what is all this saying? It really didn't, it wasn't very clear. So the one that really made the most sense to us was the one that, that Brandon just put together, and that was dated like a day ago or two days ago, so. Any questions for me at all? That's really all I wanted to say. I just wanna, I'd love to have, let's say, another month or so of time, just to be able to find out more about what is specifically being planned, because we want to, we're very concerned about trying to keep things in the nice, nice category that it's been in when it's expanded, so.
They don't have anything in the plans right now. It's just to lock down what their, what their density is and what they can do. So anything that would be done in the future would have to come back through this board. You'd be notified on it and given a chance to, to see what they're doing.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's see, we got, uh, Brandon Burge? Is that right?
Yes, close enough. Well, I'm Brandon Berg. I'm the gentleman who was speaking about, sorry, not the first time. I'm Brandon Berg. I'm with Berg Law Firm. I represent the, the Master Association out there, Topsail Master Association. And I think the, the, just to make it clear, we, no pun intended, but we kind of serve different masters out there as the Master Association. The association entity is made up of all the owners that live within the community, but the board is comprised of the presidents of the various sub-associations that are out there. And there's different viewpoints on the board itself, just who's in favor of this and who wants more information. So I'm here speaking on behalf of the collective as the entire community. I'm sure there's other folks that will speak, either on behalf of their own condominium building, or on behalf of themselves as owners, and they can be free to do that. But we've just barely become apprised of the situation. I know the entitlements for the entire property are not changing, but the way they're getting a portion is, is changing. And if there's any entity that's going to be impacted by how those density and intensities get changed, it's going to be the Master Association. And so we're not here to say that we're inherently impose this by any stretch at all. We're just asking for some more time to review and, and collaborate. I mean, the, the essentially built-out agreement includes the county and the various landowners, but the one entity that's probably going to be the most directly impacted by dealing with the implications of this is the association. And so I'd respectfully ask that we be considered on that. Now, I've had some very positive conversations with Mr. Dowd today and, and Mr. Rigby as well. And I have every intention that we can figure something out and get all on the same page so that I can go back to the owners and explain, no, here's the implications of this, here's how this is going to happen. And, and I know that there's an opportunity to come back when these things get built, and they're gonna have to get development orders and things like that. So if nothing else, I would like the commission to at least be aware of our general concerns and where we stand. And just respectfully ask that y'all, y'all table this for this month, give us the opportunity to speak with the interested parties, and then come back to you guys with hopefully a definitive, yes, we're fine with this, and let's go ahead and get it signed, or no, we have some, some, you know, interesting objections to this that we'd like to inform the commission at that point. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Jess R., and I don't know what the last part is.
Might be, is it me? About?
Oh, it may be, Jesse Rigby, okay.
Okay.
You don't need to speak again right now, do you?
I do not.
We'll let you speak at the end again. John Dowd?
That's not me again.
All right. Well, I don't have any others from the audience. Does anybody else want to speak on this?
Corey Bowman, DOW MAN. This parcel of land is located in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 21 to south, I mean, Section 35 of Range 21 West to South. This land is in the railroad deed from the TIITF to the Atlantic and Pensacola Railroad that I've mentioned so many times before, which means this land belongs to me. It was just a lease. So whatever they want to do with it, they have to ask my permission. A year ago, when I looked up Topsail, down at the very bottom of the page, it says that Topsail is a subsidiary of St. Joe. So St. Joe doesn't own anything anymore. Their lease has been canceled. So if anybody wants to do anything with this land, they have to ask me, and the only thing anybody has permission to do right now is plant live oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Rigby, would you like to respond to some of the statements?
I, I will tell you very respectfully, I don't understand what the lady just said. I've never heard that before, so.
Yeah, it's okay.
I frankly don't know. With respect to the other issue, I, I will tell you, I had, I received, and the letter that went out was four pages and included the master plan to everybody, went out to between 600 and 700 owners, everybody within Topsail. And I got eight or 10 calls, and I have all of that, and I returned every phone call within the same day. And people had questions and some confusion, and, and we directed them then also to the, the agenda once soon as it was posted, so they could access the actual agreement. I'll just pass that along. With respect to the two speakers' request, we have no objection if they want to set a meeting with the Master Association. Mr. Maldonado will be there, will go over all this, and I know that Mr. Dowd has indicated that he, on behalf of his client, will be there. However, we ask that you not table it, and let us have that meeting between now and the time the county commission meets. And if there are concerns, they can be raised at the county commission meeting. So that would be our request. But we'll commit to, to meet within the next 30 days if the association can set it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commission?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yep. Is that a motion?
We approve with the condition that they set the meeting in between now and the next PCC meeting.
Second.
Okay, did you get the motion? All right, everybody in favor?
No.
All right. No opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next one on the agenda is Bay Shore Town Homes?
Yes, sir. This is a request to approve by development order. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown. It's a major development submitted by Choctaw Engineering on behalf of Dominique Damiano, requesting approval to develop three townhomes on approximately a half acre with a future land use of coastal center. Applicant is also requesting a conditional use approval for a single-use project in a mixed-use category, projects located at 317 Bay Shore Drive in Miramar Beach and identified with the parcel number in your site. The conditional use approval is required as a condition, as a component of the land use category it's in, based on the size of the parcel and the opportunity to only do one use in a mixed-use category, but that does require the county commission's approval of that conditional use. I think the applicant is here and is prepared to present their case. We'd like to offer the staff report into evidence.
Okay. Applicant?
Good evening. My name is Mark Seiner. I am the president-owner of Choctaw Engineering, we're the agent for the applicant. As Mr. Carpenter just said, the reason why we're here is because there's a provision in your comprehensive plan that requires projects within coastal center that have one use, this being all residential, have, be a conditional approval. And if you've taken a look at the plans, it's on Bay Shore Drive, and it's predominantly residential there, and the, introducing a commercial component to this piece of property would be just totally out of character. And thus, the reason why we're presenting it as a three-unit townhome project and strictly residential, so we can stick within the character of the existing neighborhood. We have no desire to do a mixed-use development because of the fact that it is in a residential area. So we're asking tonight for, to get approval of the conditional use, so we can move forward with the residential, the three-unit townhome project.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Let's see, we got any Dominique Damiano? Don't see him. Oh, you need, you want to speak?
I'm Francis Lovich. I live at 320 Bay Shore Drive. I've been there for over 26 years, and I've been sworn in. First of all, I'd like to complain about Choctaw Engineering. They sent us a site plan, which was completely illegible. I mean, the, the print was extremely small, it was hard to read the measurements and any information on the site plan. I live across the street. I have two neighbors that live 300 feet away from the proposed development. They faxed in letters of opposition because they were out of town. One of those neighbors also collected 37 signatures from residents and taxpayers on Bay Shore Drive opposing the development. Bay Shore Drive and the surrounding neighborhoods are comprised of single-family houses, and this three-unit townhome is inconsistent and incompatible with the established neighborhood. And there also seems to be some confusion about the zoning of this property. I'm confused. Previously, the owner tried selling the property and listing it, listing its zoning as single-family residence on the MLS, right here. He tried dividing the lot into two parcels and listed it, listed the zoning as single-family residence on the MLS. On the tax roll, I looked on, you know, on the website for the property appraiser, the zoning is listed as single-family residential resort. I'm not sure what that means. And then I get a copy of the future land use map and indicates this lot is zoned coastal center. Nearby lots on Bay Shore are included in this coastal center zone, but they're single-family houses. Whatever the zoning is in this area, the street is comprised of single-family houses. A three-unit townhouse does not belong here. One of the concerns is with a three-unit townhouse is the density is going to be increased. You know, there's going to be more traffic, more noise, you know? You know, there's going to be more traffic, more noise, you know, and need for additional parking for the townhome residents and their guests. I think each townhouse has allotted two parking spots. What happens when they have visitors? Where are they going to park? On the street? On my yard? On my neighbor's yard? Another concern is, what if these units become rentals? You know, I don't know what this developer is going to do. And, you know, the same issues apply. There's going to be more noise, traffic and parking. And there's going to be safety issues. You know, random people are going to be coming and going and this is going to jeopardize our stability and quiet nature of our neighborhood. A final issue I have, since I live across the street, is the flooding issue. You know, Bay Shore Drive floods during moderate rainfall. And the elevation on this proposed site is going to be, I don't know, two and a half feet more than the street level. I know there's going to be a retention pond in the back of the development, but I don't understand what is the drainage going to be on the front. You know, this development is going to be on an incline. Water falls downhill and it's going to go right into the street and into my yard. So, that's another concern. So, essentially, this development is not compatible with our neighborhood of single-family houses. They're only benefiting the developer who is solely profit-driven. So, I just ask you to reject this proposal. And I also have the petition of the members on Bay Shore that signed and the letters from the two residents that are out of town. I don't know if these were faxed to the planning department. I don't know if you received them or not. Would you like them?
We got them.
And you got the petition as well?
We did, thank you.
And I will say, the petition was, you know, accumulated by my neighbor on Sunday before she left and a lot of residents were not available. So, I'm sure a lot of other residents would have signed if they had the opportunity. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Moss?
My name is Sarah Moss, M-O-S-S. My family moved to the beach in the late 1970s. I've grown up in Santa Rosa Beach. Moved as a young adult to all the way up to Black Creek and Freeport for a couple of years. And in 2013, my husband and I moved back down to Miramar Beach to Hidden Harbor neighborhood. We absolutely love that neighborhood and that area of Miramar Beach. We currently purchased a second home, or I'm sorry, a second lot in Miramar Beach. So, we have two properties, one on either side. We actually drive through Bay Shore Drive going from property to property quite often. And I'm here to oppose the project today as well. I feel, and I had trouble understanding how many square foot the project was. It looked like maybe it was 2,900 per unit. So, I think the entire was about 8,000 square feet. We feel that this is just monstrosity compared to the surrounding homes that are more estate style. We feel that the size of the building in relation to the lot would just be completely out of place and that it would bring the neighborhood would be non-conforming with the surrounding architecture. We do feel that it would bring property values down introducing multifamily homes. So, I came in today just to ask you to please consider denying that request for the townhomes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Scooping?
Dan Scoopman, I live at 74 Crest Drive, real close to this proposed development. Just, I have some basic questions and maybe you just tell me real fast because I just found out about this. And is this the first public hearing about this with the planning commissioner? What's the status?
I think it is with the planning commission, but it had to go through TRC and that was advertised, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. This project has received a recommendation of approval from the technical review committee. In a major development application, we did not open a public hearing at that meeting. We do invite and accept any technical questions or comments related to the development itself, but it is not in the format of a public hearing. This is actually the first public hearing for this particular project. There will be a subsequent hearing if this project moves forward to the Board of County Commissioners before final approval.
Well, thank you.
So, after this hearing, if it was approved, then it goes to the county commissioner? The two commissioners?
It goes forward to the Board of County Commissioners whether this board approves it or denies. This board just gives a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
This board gives a recommendation?
And the BCC makes...
This is the last time the public's going to be able to talk to this?
No, no, no.
You'll be able to speak if you'd like to come to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. You can speak then as well and the BCC will make the final decision on the project.
I think, and I didn't get any notification of this and I'm about a block away. I'm on Crest Drive and that's on Bay Shore, but it's very close. And the thing that really bothers me, I believe, I think 95% of the owners in this neighborhood aren't aware that it's coastal. I guess it's coastal center and it's not zoning. Is it zoning? Is it called zoning?
Land use.
Land use, okay. I don't think anybody's aware of it. I mean, we think that we live in a neighborhood of single-family dwellings. That's what's there. And so, this is a big surprise. And to add more density, I'm just thinking, what's the, you know, why are we doing this? Is it just because developers want to, you know, make more money, cram more things in and just, you know, hell with safety and things like that? And, you know, there's a lot of issues. And I think this could set a precedent because if this gets approved, why not every lot that's around there? Why doesn't everybody put a townhouse on there? I mean, we're going to have, you know, and I'm looking at Crest Drive, for example, there's a lot of land there that we all think single-family dwellings. But, you know, I could be just really surprised. There's all kinds of developers working and getting ready to put in townhouses. And we don't even know about it. I didn't get any notification about this and I don't know, maybe you have to be at 300 feet or something, but I didn't find out about it until I read it on the internet. So, you know, no multifamily is currently in this neighborhood at all. We don't have anything like that. And I just, we're opposed to it. We think it set a really bad precedent and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, didn't have anybody else sign up, so I'm going to close the public.
Before you...
Go ahead.
Before you do, could I, the first lady that spoke, could I ask you a question real quick? You live across the road?
I live right across the street.
Could you come back up? I should have asked you when you was up here, but I didn't think about it. I'm getting old. Don't even say anything. You live across the street?
Directly across the street, yes.
And your lot is waterfront?
Yes.
So, this is the last street before you get to the bay?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and like I said, you know, Bay Shore Drive does not have any type of ditches on either side of the road like Shore Drive does or whatever you call them. So, when it rains, the water just settles. It goes, even in the neighbor's yard, that's the developer, he lives next door to me. Your front yard floods.
How, would you mind me asking how large your lot is?
It's 100 feet by 200 feet deep.
So, that's what, about half acre?
Something similar to that, yes. I think it's maybe 117 feet. So, yeah, and like I said, you know, flooding is an issue. It's, you know, he elevated that property, you know, several years ago by putting in lots of fill, so it's already razed. And from what I understand, when I talked to Choctaw Engineering, I forget the gentleman's name, they said that the first floor elevation is going to be eight feet and that the road is five and a half feet. So, you know, that's an incline right there. There's, I think there's going to be a retention pond in the back. But even so, you know, there's going to be a lot of concrete, building site, water's got to go to the lowest spot. So, it's my concern.
Thank you for coming back up and answering for me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I was going to ask if there was anybody else that wanted to speak before we close it to the public? Yes? Wait, we got one more behind you.
Koi Bowman. On the website, this is owned by Damiano and Tammy Butler. I'm almost positive that she's a relation of Van Butler, who is responsible for a huge amount of corruption in this town. So, I clicked on the first deed and if you look at this piece of paper, it's been, it's got a different type and it, this is where somebody has cut out a piece of paper and glued it to a piece of paper and then photocopied it like this, which means that the land description that's on here is most likely not the actual land description that goes with this document. Meaning, like, if you actually found this piece of paper, you would be able to, like, peel off this land description and find the real one underneath. So, once again, we have an extremely suspect chain of deeds. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I didn't mean to come up here, but I need to know. My name's Dominique Damiano. My wife is Tammy Butler. There's no relationship to Van Butler. My wife is from Sterling, Illinois. We came here from Chicago, moved here in 1996. We own the property across the street, have lived there since 2000. I don't know what this woman's talking about, but there is no relationship, there's no peeling off of names or whatnot. The chain of title on this property is very interesting because this property came from a man by the name of Mr. Patterson, okay? Mr. Patterson had a trailer on that property and a beat-up trailer for many years. He was one of the original settlers in our area, okay? Mr. Patterson came to us and he was old and he was getting ready to die. And he said, hey, I'm out of money. Could you buy my property? And when I pass away, you could take title to it. So, we did that. We paid for his property and let him enjoy the last of his days, okay? Once he passed away, then we took title of the property. I don't know where this lady's coming from as far as Van Butler goes, but my wife's a butler. She's an American Irish butler from the United States in Sterling, Illinois, okay? We're not, it's utter nonsense.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
We understand. Okay, we'll close public comments. You want to respond to some of the questions?
I'm going to try to keep this brief because it gets kind of convoluted because what you have is a situation where I'm not going to disagree with the folks that are here that you've got coastal center in an area that probably shouldn't be coastal center, but that's neither here nor there because it is what it is. My client owns a piece of property. The county, for whatever reason, decided that that piece of property, along with several of the properties adjacent to it, are all within coastal center. Coastal center allows development up to eight units per acre. Obviously, somebody thought that was the appropriate zoning for that piece of property and the adjacent pieces of property. We're coming in here within, underneath the regulations within the Land Development Code or Comprehensive Plan that allow this development to occur. We've presented it. It's been reviewed and approved by the TRC. It meets all your technical requirements for your Land Development Code. The interesting part about this whole entire thing is that if we had decided to introduce a commercial component to this project, make it truly mixed-use, we wouldn't be here. It would just go to TRC. It would get approved by staff and we'd be out there building it now. The only reason we're here is because my client, Mr. Damiano, does not feel that a commercial component at this particular location is appropriate. So, we're actually bringing the project more into compliance with the residents next door. So, from that standpoint, there is an inherent flaw within the system, I believe, of your comprehensive plan that is basically creating the situation we're here tonight. And I'm not going to say whether it's right or wrong. I'm just going to bring it to your attention. If staff wants to do something about it, the planning commission wants to do something about it, the Board of County Commissioners wants to do something about it, great. But obviously, in 2014, they put that in the comprehensive plan because they were trying to deal with a certain situation. And I feel like this is one of those things that they didn't think at all the way through. And now, we're here tonight and we're in a situation where we're trying to do the right thing and we're being forced to go through an additional process in order to ask to do something that I think is better than what we could have gotten or applied for and be putting in there right now. Regarding some of the other issues, real simple, there's a flood zone out there. We have to build above it. I realize everything out there is low. I realize everything out there floods. We can't fix that problem. That was done years and years ago when the development originally went in. If you were to redevelop in this area right now, all those homes would be higher, that road would be higher, there wouldn't be a flooding issue. We can't fix that. I can tell you though, as a fact, we're only building on 30% of this piece of property because we've got to put it, use a tremendous amount of it just for stormwater retention. If we did a single-family home on this piece of property, you know how much stormwater would go in? Zero. You know how much of the piece of property we could build on? Almost double what we're proposing here. And believe me, there are homes on that street that are huge, that take up a lot of space and they don't provide any stormwater retention. So, I'm not necessarily saying that single-family is worse or better than a townhome. All I'm telling you though is because we're going through this process and we're doing townhomes, we're putting things in here that are actually better than if it was a single-family home from a engineering standpoint. I'm not going to argue whether or not the use is the correct thing or not because that's not my opinion. So, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions?
How big are these townhomes?
I do not know off the top of my head. Like 25 feet wide by like...
Square feet?
Like 2700 square feet or something like that? It's like 8,000 square feet total.
How many parking places?
There'll be one garage and then there's...
27, 35?
Oh, it's close, 2700, yeah. The, there'll be one garage parking and then there'll be driveway out in front. And per the requirement of the Public Works Department, we're going to have two driveways. So, essentially like a horseshoe-type driveway. So, there'll be one driveway to come in and one to go out.
What's the height on them?
It's a two-story building, so 25, 30 feet, something like that. I mean, no bigger than a regular single-family home in terms of height.
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board? We've already shut down the public comment section.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I also think that it's our responsibility to look out after the people who already live there. And I think putting townhomes in the middle of a single-family neighborhood is not protecting those people because it's going to inherently drag down their property values. I mean, we're talking about the houses across the street are waterfront homes. Those are homes that cost a lot of money. And now, you're talking about introducing townhomes. It's just not compatible. It's not compatible with the neighborhood. The stormwater is going to be, there's already a bad problem out there and you're just exacerbating a bad problem by, because the street's already flooded. And now, you're putting your place higher than the surrounding. That water's got to go somewhere. I just don't think it's compatible. I don't think it's going to, it's in the best interest of the whole neighborhood. And I make a motion, we deny.
Got a motion? Got a second? We don't have one yet. Got a second? Alright, motion fails for lack of a second. Anybody else got anything?
Nope.
No?
No, public comments are closed down, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I ask the applicant representative a couple more questions or are we through with that at this point?
I guess, I don't know.
As a board, you can decide to reopen.
I can give you just a couple of quick questions if we don't mind. I'd move that we reopen so that I could ask the applicants some questions.
Alright.
Do we need all in favor?
Yeah, let's just...
Okay, are they all in favor? Okay, applicant?
Let's say that this is denied tonight. Just as a hypothetical. Did I understand you say that there was a route for the developer to take that avoided this commission entirely?
That's correct.
And what would the eventual use be were you to avoid this commission entirely? That's not meant to be an aggressive question. That's just meant to be, I want to know what's worse, townhomes or what else it might be?
I don't consider it aggressive. I think it's a brilliant question because of the fact I think that somebody needs to pay attention to what's going on here.
Well, tell me what the other alternative is if you avoid us entirely?
We could do anything, commercial, civic or public.
So, then, and I'm talking to the rest of you. If you don't mind, if you'll stay...
No, no, I'm more than willing to help you out here.
I don't wear a robe. This is my only time making questions.
I got you.
Danny, and I'm going to ask these questions of you just so we can talk about it generally. And I'm not picking on you, I just want to ask. I don't wear a robe. This is my only time making a question.
I got you.
Danny, and I'm going to ask these questions of you just so we can talk about it generally. And I'm not picking on you. I just want to ask. Is it better that the applicant stick three townhomes in a single-family community? Or is it better that he put a warehouse in there? And that, that you don't have to answer me. I'm just, I'm trying to think through it. Because I know if I were living in that community, I'd much rather have three townhomes than a commercial warehouse.
Well, if you're talking about the lesser of two evils.
That's exactly what I'm...
The lesser of two evils would be residential. I mean, I understand that the, the code is flawed. But I also understand those people's point.
I do, too. I do, too. Don't think I don't.
So, we're sticking it to them either way. And if I lived in that neighborhood, I would not be a happy camper.
And they've expressed that. Quite a few of them very eloquently. But I think between these two, the applicant's representative has said, and I agree with him, that it's better to have three townhomes on this space than it would be to allow them to create some sort of a commercial property in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. And I can tell you that I have lived through, not lived through, that makes it sound like some awful was happening, but I have been through this situation. And I'd much rather see residential than commercial. And for that reason, I'm going to make a motion once we close this, unless anybody else has any questions, that we approve with the idea that those remain residential and limited to three.
That's your motion?
That's my, well, I need to ask the county attorney to...
Does anyone else have any questions, I guess, now that we've reopened the discussion?
Okay. Anybody else got any questions?
I'd just like to point out that he did make a point that if it's, if they put a residence in there, there would be no stormwater retention. At least this structure will house some stormwater retention. If they put a residence in there, it could cover more of the lot and have nothing there. So, at least this is having, there is something there, and it did pass the technical side.
That's a point I didn't make. Thank you for that.
Compla, the planning department's saying there would have to be, uh, stormwater in there for residential also. Mike, I got a question for you. The, um, the component of commercial, is that, is it a combination of residential and commercial, or just one or the other?
It actually doesn't have to include commercial. There are other uses that could be combined on this site for a mixed-use site. Uh, commercial is probably one of the more popular ones to consider. But commercial right next to residential preservation would probably not be something we would recommend. However, we'd like to correct the applicant. If this were a single-family home, you absolutely would be, be doing the same kind of stormwater these days. That code has changed.
Okay.
Uh, so every development gets to do stormwater.
So, we've already closed the public comment section down.
So, if, by the code, this has to have two uses?
We would have to have more than one use, yes, sir. There are other things that could be there that might not be palatable with the neighbors. But this is not in the same land use category as those across the street. That's residential preservation. It is restricted to single-family homes. This is coastal center. It's a primarily residential category. There are a number of things you cannot do commercially in coastal center. But it is a mixed-use category, and if they chose to do a mixture of uses, um, they could do something there without having to come through this process to get approval to do only a single use. We supported this project because they were doing residential. We didn't feel like any additional, uh, other use would be compatible here other than residential. The stormwater is designed to capture all of their stormwater in the stormwater pond at the south side of the project. Uh, it is required to have a finished floor elevation of eight feet because it's in a special flood hazard, special flood hazard area of 8E7. So, our code requires you to have a one-foot freeboard above the flood zone base elevation. That doesn't mean that everything's going to slope to the street. This particular project is designed to capture all the stormwater and send it to the south side of this lot opposite the street.
To the stormwater?
Yes, sir. But it's going to have to have stormwater in any regard. This is probably providing much more stormwater management than a single-family home typically would. So, the applicant is correct there that they are doing more stormwater than would otherwise have to be required. But even a single-family home would have to have, uh, an improved stormwater plan that meets the same code requirements that this development does.
Now, this, this lot's less than a half acre. It's like .404, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir.
Somewhere in there. So, there's no warehouse going on .4 acres realistically. I mean, unless you're...
Not a large one, no, sir.
Yeah, you could put, so, I mean, they're not building a, a store all over there. It's just not, it's not big enough. So, it goes back to protecting the rights of the people who already are there.
Yes, sir.
And I understand, I don't, I don't have any problem with y'all because it is residential. But at some point, somebody's got to talk about the people who already live there and who have lots of money tied up in those homes. And when you devalue their property, that's not right. I mean, it's just not. And I, I'm not voting for that. It's not.
Okay, anybody else got anything?
I have a question. After the finished product, if it is approved, what would the town, uh, townhomes be sold for?
Can't answer that question. I don't have, you know, that's not my expertise. But if you, if you follow the recent residential real estate market, it's pretty darn good.
Well, I mean, obviously, the three, three townhomes are going to sell for more than one family, or you'd be here wanting a one, a single-family dwelling. I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that, but...
Not at all.
But, so, I, I mean, I understand why. I'm just saying, there is, there is a responsibility to the other people, too. And somebody's got to look out for them.
And it makes a good suggestion. Regardless of how you vote tonight, I think it would be a good idea for somebody at the county to figure out why you have coastal center on Bay Shore Drive.
Amen.
I'm not here to, you know, argue how or why, because like you said, you're here, you are all here trying to make a decision based on somebody else's decision a long time ago. You didn't put coastal center up there. I didn't put coastal center up there. Somebody else did, and we're just working within the rules that you provide us.
And, and, and this, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and that, but somebody made a mistake, a big one. And we, I agree it needs to be fixed, but we, we can't do that.
I understand. Neither can I.
All right, y'all ready for motions?
Anybody else got any more questions? Okay.
You think I'm allowed to speak at all?
No, sir, I'm sorry. Public comments, Rob. Did you have something?
No, I was just thinking.
All right, board, what do you want to do?
I move we approve with the caveat that it be only three and that they comply with the stormwater regulations articulated by Mac tonight.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
We got a second? All in favor? Opposed?
Uh, opposed.
All right. Motion passed. Okay, next item on the agenda. Newbama Steel?
Yes, sir. This is a request to approve by final order. It's a major development that's been reviewed by Tim Brown. The application is submitted by Chalked-O Engineering on behalf of K-5 Development, requesting approval to develop approximately 7,500-square-foot commercial warehouse and associated infrastructure on approximately .67 acres with a future land use of business park. Uh, the project's located on the south side of Saranover Road, north of US Highway 98, and is identified by the parcel number in your package. We'd like to request a staff report be entered into the evidence, and the applicant is here to present their case.
Okay, thank you. Applicant? You're still here, huh?
I'm still here. Mark Siner, Chalked-O Engineering, agent for the applicant, and more excited to be here for this project than the last one. This one is actually a, a use that I think is very compatible with the, the property and the surrounding properties. It's actually a, a 7,500-square-foot commercial warehouse in a business park. This is about the third or fourth project we've done in this business park within the last year. I'm just here to ask for you to recommend approval to the board and county commissioners.
All right, any questions?
This is just off Saranover, right? This is the one back there in the St. Joe Park?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. We didn't have anybody sign up. Does anybody have any? Of course.
All right, so this is a St. Joe property, right? Okay, so, um, the reason that St. Joe had to sell it to themselves is because nobody else would buy it, because they can't prove that they own it. They do not have a patented legitimate title from the federal government. This 18-3 South, Section 5, is right in the middle of my land. You see all this purple? It all legally belong, belongs to me. St. Joe doesn't own anything. Do you know about the Florida House bill, like, 805-602-612 that, that's going through that talks about, um, the, the traditional use of the beach? Uh, well, I got on there and I read it, and, and very little of it has to do with the beach, customary use of the beach. It's on the governor's desk right now, waiting to be signed. The majority of that bill talks about if somebody has come onto your land illegally, that the true landowner has the right to evict them. And that has to do with me, because you see, I own all of this land, and what the governor and the state of Florida are doing is allowing me a legal process by which to evict St. Joe from all of it. So, um, they don't have my permission to do anything with my land except replace all of the live oaks that they've stolen over the last 84 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll shut down the public comments and, uh, what is the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You were a little late.
I was.
You got them, Karen? Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item up is...
We can, sure, yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
The Reston LLC, uh, they're requesting approval to develop a 249 to 252-room hotel on plus or minus 2.11 acres with the future land use of Coastal Center. Project's located at the northwest intersection of Baytown Village Drive and Legend Creek Drive within the Sandestin Development of Regional Impact, identified by the parcel number in your package. Mr. Chairman, there's been an objection to notice raised, and so if we could address that particular issue, um, the applicant is prepared to address that, uh, since they are responsible for notice delivery, uh, and we have an objector that would like to also speak on this issue.
Okay, we'll start with that. The applicant want to speak on that?
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Dean Burgess, B-U-R-G-I-S, with Emerald Coast Associates, and I have been sworn. As Mac had mentioned, we, staff asked and we agreed to go ahead and address the, the notice question. We did receive a letter yesterday from Dunlap and Shipman regarding notice, and, uh, one of the, the primary concern that was raised in that notice is, has to do with how common areas are handled in the condominiums that surround the development. You can either have common areas in some instances that are owned by the association, and the association actually has ownership of that project, or each owner within the condominium can fractionally own a portion of that common area. These condominiums that surround us are fractionally owned. Now, when you do a search in the, as the county outlines to do in their notice requirements, you either go to the property appraiser's website, or you can pay a fee and go to GIS, and GIS, and you, you can either generate your own list within 300 feet of the property or have GIS do it. We opted to pay the fee, have GIS do it. It's a little more accurate and, and more foolproof, if you will. However, both systems still have that same glitch in it. If your, uh, your 300-foot radius touches a common area of a condominium, but not, does not encompass that entire condominium area, it will only print, um, actually, it will not print anything for that condominium, that there's any property owners. It gives you a parcel ID-AAA. Has no address associated with it. You have to manually go in, click on that. It opens up all of the owners that have a fractional interest in that land. And that is exactly what we did. We did that extra step. In particular, the Alation, which is the condominium furthest from, uh, the radius for our project, was nicked in the corner, um, just touched a common area, and we have notified all of the owners within the Alation condominium. The affidavit that we sent to the county was the GIS printout, which did not include those. I have provided staff with another affidavit with the new list showing everybody that was noticed. They also got the return receipts to check it against and to confirm that all the owners within Alation were notified. A second part of this is that we note, we noticed within 350 feet of the project. We went an extra 50 feet to avoid any of this confusion that a condominium is two feet outside of the 300-foot radius. Why weren't they notified? We went an extra 50 feet to make sure that we caught everybody. If we only went 300 feet, we would not have touched Alation's common area at all. Technically, we didn't have to notice them at all. That we wouldn't have touched their common area, wouldn't have touched any of the units, wouldn't have touched anything. So, I think we've gone above and beyond, uh, the requirements for notice, um, based on this summary. We have all the condominium documents, and I have my legal counsel here, Dana Matthews, if we want to get into that. But I, I hope I've done a, a good synopsis of how we conducted our notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dana Matthews, um, lawyer in South Walton, represents the applicant. Thank you, gentlemen. Just to further detail some of what Mr. Burgess has told you, as you all know, there's several forms of notice and posting that needs to be done before, you know, we're able to come to a meeting like this. One of which is what he talked about was the 300-foot rule and, and pulling up the information from the property appraiser's office and making sure he sends certified letters to those people. I would like to introduce into evidence the first affidavit that Mr. Burgess, and I think I can confirm with staff that they received, dated March 5th of 2018, which follows the county's form on proof of service to 537 addresses, which was what he called the first part when you click on and you don't go the extra step. So, I guess this is, I guess you call it Exhibit 1?
Yes.
All right. Um, next is Exhibit 2, which is the affidavit that after we got the letter yesterday, talked to Dean, said, "Double-check your affidavit. Make sure you, you captured all the owners." And, and that's when he realized that the other people that he had sent letters to wasn't part of his affidavit. And so, I, he did another affidavit today. So, instead of 537, you have 586 people who were notified at $6.88 apiece through Stamp.com and with certified letters that went out.
And we only have one copy of these, so just make sure Karen gets it at the end.
Okay.
Hopefully, this will be Exhibit 2.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm also going to pass out Exhibit 3. If I may. As Mr. Burgess, this is all delivered as staff. I made my notes while I knew what Billy can switch. But when you go on the GIS map and determine the footage, it draws a blue circle around it, and that's how the computer software program tells you, you know, how to click on the database. And you'll see that this is a 350-foot, um, radius that was taken. This is the proposed site of, of the project, the hotel, and these are the different condo projects, if you will, that are within this 350 feet. This one is the Gateway, um, condominium. This is Le Jardine condos. Even though it cut it off, we sent notice to all those owners. This is Lasada, even though it's just right on the edge of the 350-foot line, all Lasada people got, got, um, percent letters. This is the Grand Sandeston, right here, and then this is the Alation. And again, you'll see where the line just barely touched, but it is within their proper line. One of the things that Mr. Shipman will say that Bahia condos never got noticed had starts in this little box up here, so obviously outside three-hundred-and-fifty feet, we acknowledge that we didn't send any letters to Bahia condominium. So I'd like to introduce this, Exhibit Three. Four, as far as notice is required, as you all know, it's four by signs, I think, you know, with a certain font and the date and stuff. It was right here on Baytown Avenue, which is the travel road. It was posted properly. I'd like staff to, I'd like to have you introduce the evidence and staff to confirm that they received...
The affidavit and the photograph.
Next is Exhibit, I guess, Four. This would be Emerald Coast Associates, October twentieth, two thousand and eighteen letter, which shows the proposed project. This is a further publication that didn't take place. These are the certified letters.
Okay.
I'd also like staff to confirm that they have verified the five-hundred-and-eighty-six green cards that were turned in for the certified mail.
We did, um, verify those receipts.
Okay.
Okay.
And then finally, I don't have a copy of it, but I'd like staff to confirm that the, they filed their publication in the Communication Springs Herald or whatever newspaper. I know the newspaper has to sign an affidavit of the dates of publication for proper time periods for notice.
So you have to produce the notice.
So that's all I have to say on this issue. I know that when Mr. Shipman is going to speak, I'm sure, I'd like an opportunity for a brief rebuttal, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you, and I'll answer any questions. I'll have right now.
Mac? Three-hundred, is it three-hundred? The code says three-hundred feet?
Yes, sir. The code says three-hundred feet.
Thank you. Mr. Shipman?
Correct. A few inaccuracies. First, when Mr. Burgess said there's two types of condominium ownership, there's not. Seven-eighteen, there's one. You are a seven-eighteen condominium. The unit owners own an undivided equal interest in all proper, real property interests that the condominium has. There is no ownership by the association. That interest includes any common elements, which includes parking spaces and easements. I want to start with the simple part, and I'll get to the hard part later. The two different mailing lists and affidavits that the applicant submitted. At four-thirty today, we went over their list, along with the actual list that you can get from the... I'm not computer literate, but the computer service.
G.I.S.
Yeah, and had it verified by the planning department. I'd like to submit as Exhibit One for us. The, a copy of that, along with an email from the planning department verifying that there were at least six unit owners at Alation that are not on either list, and were not provided notice.
So this is the office, or I guess, position of Exhibit One? I have to composite exhibit.
All right. I have for you all to hand out an exhibit of the actual language of the notice requirement I'd like to pass out to each of you, so we can discuss it, and what is actually required here when it involves a condominium.
Thank you.
And I'd like to point, before we start on that, one of the reasons that we're particularly a little bit annoyed with this is that the applicant actually has a board member. They appoint one board member to sit on the board of all of these affected condominium associations. And in fact, I'll bring up Mr. Bernie Perotti in a minute. He actually inquired of the developers recently as the end of January. We know you're thinking about doing this. I'd like to hear from you as to what your plans are. And was told, "Well, we're not ready. We'll contact you when we're ready," and we never heard from them. Now, under subsection, under Section ten-point-oh-three-point-oh-two D, which is the mailing requirement, it says, "After sending certified notice at the time and place of each public hearing before the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners, shall be postmarked at least ten days in advance of the hearing by certificate of mailing to owners of real property within three-hundred feet." Now, this gets back to what I discussed as what is the real property a condominium owner owns. When you buy a condominium in the state of Florida, presents Chapter seven-eighteen, what you basically buy is the right to occupy the airspace within your unit and an undivided equal interest in all the real property that condominium owns. So I want to start with Bahia. The actual building of Bahia may be more than three-hundred feet from this proposed project, but the parking spaces for Bahia are located underneath the conference center, approximately fifty to a hundred feet from this project. And in fact, the access to the parking garage will be cut off by this building. The easement to get to those parking spaces, which is a real property ownership interest of the owners of Bahia, Alation, and the Grand, this building will be placed on top of. So they all have a real property ownership interest in this project and have a right to be noticed and be here. I attended a board meeting of the Bahia Condominium Association at one-thirty this afternoon. None of the board members were aware of this. None of them knew this was happening. And one of the things, first thing that came out of their mouth was, "Our parking spaces are right in front of where they're proposing to put that building." The parking spaces are part of the real property that they own. This project also proposes to utilize a parking lot as part of its project on where they're going to have parking for this hotel. There is a parking lot in front of the Grand Sandeston and Bahia. In that parking lot, that they are claiming use of all two-hundred-and-something spaces, forty-five of those spaces actually belong to Alation Condominium. Again, a real property ownership interest that all of those condominium owners have an undivided equal interest in. Now, they're not asking for the world here. They're asking for proper notice so that they can participate. This morning, we contacted the Board of Alation, and as of this morning, one board member knew anything about this meeting today or had received anything about this. They hired me. I've scrambled. I've done some analysis of all the various, and there's a lot of complex easements out there. I don't think I've located them all that go through this particular building site. They will have to be addressed as part of any development order here. For example, all of these condominiums share a backup emergency generator. The generator is located just off the corner of this building site, and the easement to access that generator, to repair the generator, runs through the, right through where they're going to put this hotel. So all of these condominium owners in Bahia, Alation, and the Grand all have a real property ownership interest where they were required to be noticed. And the applicant knew this because they have a board member. They appoint a board member to boards, to the boards of all of these associations. They know where these parking spaces are. They know where this generator is. They know how they get into the underground parking lot to access their parking for these associations, and they're all real property interests of the members of the association. The fact that at a minimum, we have identified six that show up on this list that they talked about they were supposed to go look at, that are on neither affidavit of theirs and have not received notice, that alone is sufficient to find it was improper notice and continued tonight. But on top of that, they've admitted they didn't contact anybody from Bahia, because they say the building is more than three-hundred feet away. Well, it's not the building. It's any real property they own. And they have, I think it's eleven parking spaces within about fifty or a hundred feet of this project. So they're entitled to notice, and we would ask that you continue this, so that we have an opportunity. I've tried, I scrambled yesterday and today to try to identify the various easements and parking issues that will be impacted, but I really didn't have adequate time. And I know that the presidents of these associations would like to be here. We did manage to get the vice president of the Grand Sandeston here. But all of these people also live out of town. So the fact there might be a sign up there, and by the way, the applicant knows this because their rental management company manages most of these condo units. They know these people don't live here, so they're not going to see the sign. I'm the registered agent of the corporations of all of these associations. Nobody provided me notice. Their board member knows I'm the registered agent, because I'm also the general counsel, and I attend the board meetings of every one of these associations, and it was never brought up. If you go forward with this without a minimum, the six that I've identified, that's improper notice, and frankly, I've advised my clients, that's a get-out-of-jail-free card, because any decision you make would absolutely, absolutely be reversible, because you have members of the public who meet the requirements, unnoticed requirements under ten-point-oh-three-point-oh-two, who weren't noticed. Thank you.
You got a question? Hold on. Mr. Shipman, did I understand you to say that your clients have an easement through where the building's going?
Yes, sir. I have a handout. I was going to do it if you went forward, but I have a handout that depicts the easement.
Maybe that's not, this ain't the proper time to ask the question then, but...
And that's a concern now. Now, I will say, and the applicant will probably say this, there is, under these complex development documents, they have a right to provide notice and provide, again, provide notice, and provide for a way to move an easement, as long as it doesn't inhibit, you know, substantially change our ability of access or use or whatever, to move the easements. And they may have some plan to do that, although it isn't in this application.
But you also said, if I remember correctly, that your clients, one of the three of them have an ownership interest in certain parking spaces?
There are, there is a, part of the parking scheme, and I don't want, because we're talking about notice, I don't want to get too much into the application, but part of the parking scheme and the plan they submitted is that some of the parking for this hotel would be in what we call the North Parking Lot, which is kind of in front of the Grand and Bahia. Well, in that parking lot, there are forty-five, and they're counting all two-hundred and... It's a parking lot that contains two-hundred-and-something spaces, two-hundred-and-eighteen spaces. Forty-five of those spaces are the, are Alation's.
So if they, you're saying that Alation's has an ownership in those forty-five, has an ownership interest in those forty-five places?
They have an easement right to park in those forty-five parking spaces. And it's, it's an exclusive easement right. So, and these are set forth in the recorded documents for the homeowner, for the condominium association.
I was, if they, if they own forty-five places, then that sort of begs the question, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, they're going to have a problem with the parking on this, but before, but that's going to be an argument I want to make later.
I mean, I mean about notice.
Well, whether they own or, whether you own, lease, or have an easement right, if it is a legal right, it's a ownership interest in real property, and you have to have notice.
That's what I was...
So let's focus in on the six, then. The six that y'all identified that didn't get noticed. They have a real property interest, and they are within the barrier, and they did not get noticed.
Yes, sir.
Well, here's my question. There's an obvious tension between what you're saying and what you're saying. Is it worth going forward tonight if he's right, only issue of the six? And I'm talking to you, Dan, because I know you, you want to answer that.
Yes, sir.
I don't mean to ask out of turn, Gary, but I want to just ask a question. What are we doing?
Yeah, I blocked out a rebuttal, but yeah.
Gary, do you mind if I ask him? Well, I'm just going to ask him these questions if you're...
Yeah, and, but I want to go ahead and tell you, they don't dispute that they had to notice Alation. And they sent the list. It's just they left these six names off.
Okay.
And that's been verified.
Dave, with the understanding that's being said, do you agree or disagree? And I don't mean to address you today. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's fine. What?
Yeah, I'm going to ask him. I'm done with Gary and...
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. And then, Dan, I'm going to try to keep this as narrow as I can.
I understand, yes. It is my understanding that the, again, the code doesn't, I happen to disagree with my esteemed colleague, that when he says that you have to go find out who's got an easement right or some kind of tenant and get notice, that's not what our code says. Our code says from the property appraiser's website. You go to the website, you see where the address is, you send them to them. I mean, that's what, that's what happened. That's where, my understanding from staff was verified that. We, we do not have to notify Alation, because they're outside three-hundred-and-fifty feet, or three-hundred feet, but we did anyway. We did anyway. And I want, just because...
Sorry, just to clarify. So Alation was between three-hundred and three-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Exactly three-hundred-and-forty-two feet, but we did it anyway, because the line they chose, Dean chose to take it another fifty feet. And if it touched it, he didn't want to not include it, because it's just the better thing to do. And, and I want a couple factual things that make a difference here. This, if I may, approach. What Mr. Shipman is referring to, and I'll show you the map with a different condo building. This is what we call a surface parking lot out there. It's actually owned by S.T.I. And it also goes all the way over into here, and that's from the site plan. This is probably better. This is, so here's the Grand. You know, when y'all go to Baytown, you come in there and you go through the quarter, quarter chair up in here. All this parking, all that surface parking that you see, that's owned by S.T.I. And no, it's not already in construction for the hotel. This is a better, a better view of it. The, there are forty-five spots that are up here that are marked, that are actually spray painted. They were written easement agreement, was done written in two thousand and five, was amended in two thousand and seven. I brought it here, I wasn't happy to share it with you. And Alation has forty-five very specifically marked parking spaces in this area here that isn't being touched. None of this area is going to be developed. The area that's being developed is over here. All this surface parking is staying here. But, so to the extent that they got an eas, they have an easement, don't dispute that. Not moving the easement, not taking away their property rights. They're the most noticed. Has nothing to do with what we're going to be here talking about hopefully, which is the site plan itself, and what the entitlements are, and what amount we've met the land development code and the town plan. The other important thing to understand is, and I've got the declarations of condominiums, all five of these condos, including Bahia, all their parking is town heartbeat, say, town, that's what I'm saying. Every one of these condo buildings, you don't know it unless you go, unless you actually go to one of their buildings. You may have parked underneath the Grand, you know, that parking garage where the Grand Conference Center, you go down underneath, you park there, but you don't realize that, that parking extends all the way to these other condos. And each of the declarations of condominium give the unit owners, no matter how many they are, I've got them written down, exact amount of parking spaces that they have in their building. And they also have some shared spaces underneath the conference center, and they have the right to lease some spaces. But none of them, none of these condos have any rights to any of these surface parking lots, with the exception of the forty-five that Alation has, that are not being disturbed as part of the site plan. I want to tell you that. The other thing is that Mr. Shipman is right. The declarations of condominium, the way you describe them is, when you look, when you take the entire piece of property for a project, and it's defined, property of... a project, and it's defined, property is defined in two ways, one is the unit and the one is what's left. And the unit, as Mr. Shipman accurately said, basically it's interior airspace. Everybody else has an undivided fractional interest in that. All these people that have an undivided fractional interest, they have them in the common areas within their condominium. Not the surface parking lot, not Sandestin's property, Sandestin Investments, their own property. So it doesn't impact this site plan. We believe that we've given proper notice to everybody as the code requires. And I haven't heard anything other than that. I, I, I hear what Mr. Shipman say about six people, I don't know what to say about that. You know, I don't know if those six people have given affidavits and, and I know that we've got an affidavit that says they all got noticed, so I, I don't know. He didn't give me a copy of what he just turned in to Ms. Noise for the six people. But I believe, Mr. Shipman's here, I mean, there's five hundred and eighty-six people that got notices. Now, if they don't go pick up their, you know, certified mail, that shouldn't be the applicant's fault. And if there was five hundred and eighty-six people that had such an interest in it, it'd be more than Mr. Shipman, I would think, here. But anyway, that's all I know how to respond.
Well, let me ask this, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Danny, go ahead.
I was just going to, John, or Mr. Roberts' question about, are you willing to take a chance that he's right and he's got a get out of jail free card? Or would you rather?
I don't think he has a get out of jail free card because unfortunately, the way our code is set up is, you got to get to here and you get to make a recommendation, up or down, or, or with, approved with conditions. And really, we know what happens, you got to go to the BCC, and that's not for a month anyway. So I don't think there's a get out of jail free card, as he calls it.
Well, I guess maybe the pointed question that Danny was asking is, is it worth your time and our time to go forward tonight if there is an issue outstanding?
Well...
With the understanding...
I understand the question.
Absolutely. We've done what we're supposed to do, just because he's over there waving his hand, we don't need to delay. Remember, he made a misstatement about members on the board. We don't appoint members to the board. We do not have a member on this board. That terminates a turnover. If he says we don't have members on this board, I'm not going to delay because...
Unfortunately, this, unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be, we spent five years in litigation with Walton County and the Sandestin Owners Association and a bunch of other associations. We finally, you know, got NOPC ordinance, as y'all know, y'all were involved in it, approved back in, whenever it was, February, then we get sued, and then we have to go back and get it settled and get it revised, and that's all taken place. This project, there's a lot of moving pieces to a hotel project. And between contractors and design professionals and everything else, everybody's on a contractual time schedule right now. So Mr. Becknell would like to move forward.
I have a question about the six people in question that either were or were not noticed. Are they within three hundred feet or three hundred and fifty feet?
Three hundred and fifty feet.
So they're outside the three hundred?
Yes, sir.
Sydney, what is your opinion on this? Because you're confused.
Right, well, first of all, you guys should rely on the arguments presented to you by Mr. Matthews and Mr. Shipman, but I was aware of this issue today, and I looked into it. And if you look at the code language, it says that the free, it's, the notice by a certificate of mailing is to owners of real property within three hundred feet. And you scroll down a little bit, and the key language is, whose address is known by reference to the latest approved ad lorm tax rule. So that's the key there. I think Mr. Shipman's argument is because Bahia and Elation's had an ownership interest in an easement on the parking, that they should have been notified because that parking is within three hundred and fifteen. However, if you had, just have an easement, you're not going to be on the tax rules. So that's the key language, for how to notify, for how to be on within three hundred feet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, Gary, come on.
They differ too much, but first, when you scroll down and it says, whose address is known by reference to the latest approved ad lorm tax rule, that basically tells you where to mail it, not what they own. But if you were to look at these ownership interests, what it tells you is they, they own unit four oh eight of the Grand Sandestin. And if you look at, if you would look further than that, owning unit four oh eight of the Grand Sandestin, or five fifteen of Bahia, or two twelve of Elation means that they own that unit and an undivided equal interest in all the ownership and real property ownership interests of the condominium. Something he didn't, when he went through the easement issue, and I didn't want to get ahead, but I'm going to pass out, we did a pass out for the further part of this, but it shows the easement, so I want to pass it out.
So you can see...
Do I use to be made for the record?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll do posit, opposition to...
This, these condominium, and by the way, I heard in a comment that they don't appoint a direct, I was at a meeting at one thirty this afternoon at Bahia. There's a board member named Beth Sandlin. Beth sits on that board, not because she owns a unit or because she was elected, it's because SDI has a right to appoint her because they own the commercial space within the Elation, within Bahia, and within the Grand. And she sits on these boards. In fact, she was all prepared to argue with me about why Bahia wasn't entitled to be noticed about this when I went to this board meeting at one thirty today. If you flip to the page in front of what I just gave you, it shows you these parking spaces that we're disputing. And the reason that is actually part of this development, and I, you know, if you go any further, I guess, Mr. Matthews, I have to explain this, their parking plan for this hotel is to utilize these parking spaces, which is Elation's parking spaces. Also, on the, the, where I showed you the easement, where this little yellow thing goes in, that's how you get into the parking garage that's underneath the conference center, which is the other parking spaces that belong to these three associations, and where they park. There's a little corner, we didn't mark it on here, that's right next to it, which is where the backup generator that is an appurtenance to all of these condominiums for these condominiums in the event of loss of electrical power, which this building will also cut off access to. So all these people have standing. As far as the six go, that was created, and it was confirmed by the planning department, we took their two lists that they certified with their affidavits. And we went and got the list that you do using the method they said. And these six people aren't on either list that they sent, that they certified, that they provided notice to. But they are, if you go get the correct list, they're on there. So they did improper notice. And yes, it is a get out of jail because contrary to what everyone in this county believes, where you actually have two hearings and that this hearing doesn't matter, it does. You actually make, you actually make a finding, an issue and order, that the county commission is then supposed to not have a rehearing, what they're supposed to do if somebody disagrees with your finding, is to argue before the county commission that your finding either didn't meet, you had a flaw in your conclusion of facts or issues of law. So no, this is, would be a deprivation of due process. It's not like a complete do-over in front of the county commission. So I would ask you to continue this. You're not talking about continuing to fifty years from now, and frankly, I suspect if we go forward tonight with this hearing with all these easements that cut off our access to our parking garage and our generator and everything else, they're going to have to go address these easement issues anyway as part of their development order. To me, it seems kind of silly that we have this hell bent, let's hear it tonight. And finally, the fact that they are so hell bent on hearing it tonight, and none of the board presidents of any of these associations actually received this notice, makes me really suspect about this mail-out. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking back now at the rest of the commission. Sure.
Sure. I'm going to leave all legal issues to the attorneys. This is a major development. And when we go into a development of this magnitude, we don't do it haphazardly. Everything that Mr. Shipman has said, I'm aware of. He has made some misstatements. But the statements that he's made about easements and parking, we are addressing. We wouldn't build a project of this magnitude or get this far if we didn't know what our challenges are. The forty-five Elation spaces are set aside, they're not part of our development, they never will be. As far as not communicating with his associations, we've had four meetings, excuse me, three meetings with the BWNA and representatives talking about this parking. We've had meetings to discuss alternative parking plans. I have invited the SOA, Imperium Blue, who owns the village, and Baytown Neighborhood Wharf Association to participate with us in building a larger parking garage to accommodate the current needs and future needs of the entire community. But for Mr. Shipman to stand here and say, we shouldn't be allowed to use our own property to meet the requirements that we need for a hotel, would be just like me going to him and saying, look, I've got friends coming over for a couple of weeks, I want to park in your front yard. Because that's the same thing, this is our property. Now, if we are successful in completing our plans, and this is an evolutionary process, you reach a problem, you solve it, you go to the next problem. We would like to have a garage built there. But I am not responsible for building a garage to supply other people parking, like the Baytown Neighborhood Wharf condominium owners, or the Baytown private ownership of all the shops and restaurants in there. If there is a parking shortage, it's one we inherited. We're willing to help solve it, but they have to participate too because it's their problem as well. We have a plan to build a one-story parking garage on the far southeast corner of that parking lot that will provide additional parking for us if we determine that we can't put together a larger accommodation with these other people. But as far as the law is, we can provide the parking we need to meet our hotel's demands. Let's talk about a generator.
What, can I stop you a second? We're just going to try to decide what we're doing with the, with the notice at this point?
Okay, all right, I'm going to finish by making two more statements. Give me three minutes. As far as this comment about an easement running to the generator across the property, that's not accurate. The easement to the generator comes in off of a service drive, and that will never change. We know there's a generator there, we're a part of it. The generator sits on our property. So do some other things that belong to other condominiums. These are problems that have to be addressed, and they are being addressed by the professionals who are charged with the responsibility of beating the code and being able to pull a building permit timely. We are on a schedule. You're part of our schedule. If we get knocked off because somebody claims they didn't get notice, it throws a major glitch in the delivery of this property. We need to start in August, we need to finish by January of 2020. Why August? Because that's the end of our summer season. The crowds have left. Construction can start. Why January of 2020? Because we need two months to shake this thing down before spring break hits. So that's, that's the two critical days. And we planned all of this by starting early, working with planning, going to TRC, scheduling with you folks, putting the notice out that we're required to do. And the next meeting is the BOCC for the 10th of April. All I ask you to do is be reasonable in your consideration. We've done what we felt is necessary. And if Mr. Shipman got in the game late, I'm sorry. I don't have a problem meeting with him tomorrow and going through all of these issues in detail. And I think at the end of the day, he will see that we have addressed ninety percent of his concerns, and will continue to. Thanks, Eric.
All right, Gordon. You know the issue before you. I said, you know the issue before you. What do you want to do?
Got any, got any suggestions?
This is y'all's decision, and I would suggest that you rely on the arguments that Mr. Matthews and Mr. Shipman have presented to you. But whether or not you continue that is within your discretion.
Then, Mr. Matthews, did you have one last thing to say?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm still hung up on the six, the six people that was not noticed. Because if that's the whole point of this, as to whether there was improper notice or not, I think we've been told that there was according to the guidelines. But if those six people were outside the three hundred feet, then they didn't need to be noticed anyway. So that's, if we're hinging the whole decision on whether these people were noticed or not, and if they were outside three hundred feet, then...
Where do these six people live at?
They live, I signed it to from what was discussed in Elation, and that the building footprint is more than three hundred feet.
So we're talking about them having to get noticed because they own a portion of the common elements of Elation? Is that what we're talking about? That's what I heard.
Is any of the real property associated with Elation within three hundred, within three hundred feet?
Yes.
Well, and I, just to move things along, I think Mr. Shipman's argument is the easement interest that they have in that parking is within three hundred feet.
Okay. But the building and the condo common area is outside of three hundred feet.
But, but the parking belongs to Elation?
Yes. Well, they have a, they have an easement right. You know, an easement right is a real property interest. If you have a right, you know, sort of like if you have a driveway, you don't have a right to block the driveway, it's only an easement. Or if they do, they have to give you notice. And that's what we're talking about.
Let me ask one of, one of the three lawyers. If I own, if I have an easement to my home, and there's a development going on three hundred feet away from my home, do I have, or three hundred feet away from this easement that's not my property, but I have an easement to go across this, would I have the right to be noticed in, in normal, just on the easement? Not, say my house is three hundred and twenty-five feet away, but the easement is three hundred feet away?
I guess, Mr. Buckle, to answer your question, just based on how staff normally handles this, is they go off of what's listed on the property appraisers' rolls. And the reason for that is, I mean, they, we have to have some address of where to send it and some list to go off of. And so that easement interest wouldn't show up on the property.
But I think, well, it would in the sense that if it's a condominium, which this is, what you have as an address is a condominium unit number. So you then have to look at, what are the requirements to that condominium? Because as soon as you see the word condominium in Florida, what you realize is, that unit owner doesn't just own that unit. They own an undivided equal interest in every single thing, in real property interest that that condominium has.
But getting back to the single-family house, which I understand a lot better because I don't own a condominium, but, single-family house, that easement would be shown on my deed as the access to my property.
Well, the argument that he's making is this, and I think I can sum it up.
Please do.
Is that there is a condominium development. A condominium development has real property rights in each unit, but then each person that owns that unit also has a collective right in the common elements, which would extend to the easement that he's saying. So they do have a technical property right in that easement. What the tension is, and what I'm hearing is, and I can't believe I'm answering law school questions up here, is whether or not that easement right should have otherwise appeared on the ad lorm roll and whether those people should have had notice. I believe that what Mr. Matthews is saying, and I won't do this inequently, so just forgive me, is that because those common elements and the easement pertinent does not appear on the element or on the roll, that they shouldn't have gotten notice. Mr. Shipman is arguing that because they have a private property right in that easement common element, that they should have gotten notice.
All right. So now we're back to...
Fair for both parties?
Yeah, but there's a little, one little new answer, Mr....
Oh, Lord, it's all...
Just a question, but a little help?
Oh, yeah, help.
Okay. Mr. Shipman is right. The individual unit owners in Elation own an undivided interest in the common elements. That's what, that's the defined term in the declaration. The common elements do not include these forty-five parking spaces. Here, I want to say it one more time.
The individual unit owners in Elation own an undivided interest in the common elements. That's what, that's the defined term in the declaration. The common elements do not include these forty-five parking spaces. Hear, hear me, I want to say it one more time. The condominium itself is located three hundred, uh, over three hundred, what is it, what, three hundred and forty-two feet away? Okay? So the condominium property that these people own an undivided interest in are not within three hundred feet. Period, end of story. The parking, from the Declaration of Condominium for Elation, in Section Three, "The parking spaces for the residential unit owners in the condominium are located on the ground-floor parking garage of the condominium, their own condominium, over three hundred feet away, as depicted in Exhibit C. The residential unit owners are also permitted to use the surface parking area, forty-five spaces in accordance with the terms and conditions of the Elation Parking Easement Agreement." That's this document. It's a separate document. It's recorded in public records. We recognize it, we've told you. So the unit owners have a right to use the forty-five parking spaces, but it's not common elements in their condo building. They don't have an undivided interest in that property, they just have a right to use an easement. And the code, if the code required developers to go pull and give notice to every easement holder or every tenant, it would be a totally unworkable notice-type requirement. So, and Miss Noize has tried to explain, the code says what it says, and we've complied with the code, at least within the three hundred feet. I hope that Mr. Roberts said might further...
That isn't what I said.
So, since you asked that question, and Mr. Matthews brought it up, it depends on what are dedicated common element parking spaces. I'd ask y'all to turn to the last page of the exhibit I provided you. This is an excerpt out of the Bahia documents. If you look under 3.5B3, it says, "The parking spaces for the residential unit owners in the condominium are located on the ground-floor parking garage of the condominium as depicted in Exhibit C, and in the parking garage located beneath the resort conference center," brackets, "eleven spaces." Now that's within fifty to a hundred feet of this development. Mr. Matthews has just told you that those are common elements. Bahia got no notice. They're not on the list at all.
So, Commissioner Roberts, now we get back to your central question of the first part. We, we beat around the bush, but we're back to the central question. Is this worth going forward if there's a question?
Well, let me tell you my opinion, and it's only my opinion. Both arguments are, are leading towards, if we go forward, it certainly sounds like there would be litigation of whether or not we had the ability to go forward. And if there is in fact litigation on whether or not we should have gone forward, it will necessarily delay the project further. Mr. Becknell has eloquently told us that a timing schedule matters to him more than anything else, which I think is rightful for a developer to have. I think in a better interest of, of our time, and of the public's time, and of Mr. Becknell's time, which is not used anymore, Mr. Shipman, it would behoove us to forestall the litigation issue, take it away from everybody that might otherwise have to be notified, and say, "Come back in one month," and let it go forward. Now, Mr. Matthews didn't go like that as an argument, because I understand that he's gonna have to get ready to come back down here again. But from my perspective, if in fact there would be a lit, you know, some sort of litigation over the issue of whether or not there was proper notice, that's gonna back it up a long way.
Speaking of that, there's just been five years of litigation over this.
It wasn't five, it was four.
What's a year? Or a half.
In, in any event, what I'm saying to y'all is this, and, and I'm doing it in a very unartful manner, but if we could put a pin in litigation over such a small technical issue that could be solved by continuing this for one month, and it would solve all these issues, and then we could have a full, good read on this project, I think it's better for us to move it to the next month and come back and do this the right way, if there is any questions of this right way. Now, I understand Mr. Matthews' argument to be that they've done everything the exact right way. What I understand Mr. Shipman's argument to be is that they haven't, and they intend to litigate over the issue. And maybe he hasn't said exactly that, but that's me reading between the lines.
I think he'd come pretty close.
Well, and that's me being unartful again. I'm not as smart as those two guys. But what I would tell you is, if they litigate over the issue, we won't be back here in a month, we'll be back here in a year. Or at least it feels like a while.
Mr. Matthews, you got something else?
Chairman, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not gonna get argumentative or rebuttal, but if y'all go down that route, the one thing you, you, I would ask, if you could have a, maybe a special meeting, because I, I hate to get, "I have no idea." Uh, maybe we can resolve things between now and then by sitting down with these people and showing them a cycle plan, so they understand it, not taking away any of their rights. But with that being said, I'm also not naive. And, and I hate to get into a, a planning commission meeting where I know you guys have long agendas, and other people get backed up, and, and if we end up with a two- or three-hour, you know, um, ordeal, that, um, I, I think it might be better if, maybe, maybe y'all could consider a special meeting in, in two or three weeks, or something like that, so we don't get bogged down and delayed too long. Anyway, that, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I have a feeling this is just the beginning. So that may be a good idea.
My thought is, if, if they have met the notice properly by the county, and they're prepared, you know, if it comes down to a shooting match, but he's on a timeline, you know, that's part of it. I mean, they've been noted, I, I don't know why six people aren't, well, because they weren't noticed, I guess, but there's, I don't know what the opposition would be, but...
Can you work out your differences in thirty days?
We would be willing to go up to a suggestion and say, "As soon as he leaves, we'll allow them, they meet with us next week, and explain to us how they're gonna deal with all these easement issues that look like they're gonna get blocked."
Well, didn't the developer just say that they weren't gonna block the generator, and they weren't gonna take...
Yeah, he said that, but it's not in anything they submitted to y'all.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
So, if they want...
We haven't gotten that far yet either.
We haven't gotten that far, but Mr. Matthews stood up and said, "Two or three weeks? Fine. We'll do two or three weeks." That gives time for all the presidents of these associations to meet, decide what they have a problem with, or don't have a problem with. We'll fine with that.
I'm sorry.
Does that give them enough time, Mac? I want to find out if this is gonna give them enough time to get to the BCC meeting they had planned on, if it's gonna delay that. No.
If, if they are gonna send out any other notices, they'll have to have ten days to do that.
We'll even give them the list of the people at Bahia to send it to.
Okay. Well, we need... I think there's some negotiations going on back there.
I guess we do whatever we gotta do. This is absurd, Dana. I mean, this is just really absurd. He's not telling the truth. Those people are not, if they don't, what else if a guy doesn't pick up his damn number? I'm just...
Do what?
They never was though.
Never was.
We just had...
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. Carpenter has advised me that the, uh, April twenty-ninth is, nothing is scheduled for that night, but by the county. And if you had a special meeting, we could still make our April tenth, Board of County Commissioners...
You mean March twelfth?
I mean, March twelfth, I'm sorry. March twelfth, right?
Yes.
And we can still make our, um, April tenth, BCC meeting.
So that won't delay y'all?
No, but, but these six people, that I don't even know who they are, because, I guess you do, because you've got something to hand out, um, you know, I, it, all I know is, I got one person here, and this person over here that says that the tax collector's certification roll was complied with, and I have somebody telling me that six people weren't. So I don't know who they are, I don't know what their addresses are, if it's on the property appraisers' website.
Mac, can we just have those six people noticed at that meeting? Because since we'll continue this to that, if those six people get noticed, that's all that has to be. We don't need a whole no, whole new notice, do we?
That would give the applicant time to notice anyone that might be in question.
And Mr. Shipman said he'd give you all the list and address those, of those six...
I believe that they are requiring those by here, but we'll give them the names of everybody they need to notice. I'll give them to them tomorrow.
Okay.
And if you'd like to meet with us to talk about our concerns in between...
We would absolutely.
We'll do that.
Okay. Alright, we need a motion. Twenty-ninth?
Make sure he gives us addresses, Dana.
I'm sure Mr. Shipman will say...
We need a motion still, make a...
It can't be at five o'clock, twenty-nine. I got a credit, you can meet at the uniac at three forty-five.
We've got a workshop on the twenty-ninth.
Can we meet at six o'clock?
At five?
Yeah, but we can see if we can get with that, right, Larry? It's a TDC workshop.
What time is the TDC workshop?
From five to seven.
I have a feeling we're gonna need more time to get the rest of that stuff done anyway, so...
Well, what do we need? We need a motion?
Yeah, let's make sure that everybody's good on the date first, though.
I can do it at twenty-ninth, but it's gotta be a, give me a chance to get to the uniac.
I think we'll still be going, there's no address.
If you don't hear, if you don't hear, then there's a price I'll leave you to pay.
I just stood up here and said, "I will give you the address of everybody you guys have seen this."
I know, you watched it all by... Hold it up. You make...
Five hundred and eighty-seven.
You can make a motion.
It's a rule that if...
But the county, they went by the county, this was proper notice.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's, that's up to you.
If you have to go...
Well, Mr. Beck, I think he's ready.
Twenty-ninth is fine with us.
He's not afraid of that.
Well, if we get the twenty-ninth done, it shouldn't hold them up, so...
I mean, actually, that's more convenient for me than the date you got. So, we'll do it on twenty-ninth.
Take away.
March twenty-ninth.
I'm gonna listen to your motion immediately. Please don't let me get...
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna take a motion. You go with it. Nobody's gonna tell you not to.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Y'all good on the date?
Yeah, March twenty-ninth, it's fine.
Okay. Now, at this location, five o'clock.
This location is fine.
The twenty-ninth.
Can part of the motion also be, I know you said that, but just for the record, that Mr. Shipman is gonna provide me the addresses of the six people in the Elation, and the people at the Bahia that need additional notice besides what we're doing here tonight.
You're, yeah, he's, he's gonna give you every address and name that you need to notice, so that we won't have this issue in the next round.
Yeah, perfect.
We ain't got a motion yet. I know, we don't have a motion, so...
I make a motion, so we're contingent upon them getting all the proper notifications.
It's March twenty-ninth, five o'clock here. Okay, we got a motion. Second, second. The pastor and the graver, we need a second.
You got one.
He made the motion. Oh, did he? Okay. We got a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. We'll see him here next time around.
I may just have to, I'll get here somehow.
It takes us a long, just to figure out the notice we're going on. We're gonna need a special...
Will there be no public comments on that last issue?
No, there won't. Okay, uh, the next one is Point Washington Cell Tower.
The problem with rich people is, they're scared of not getting rich.
You just waiting on them clear out? Okay, we waiting on John, or are we just gonna move forward?
I need to clear them.
Hey, guys, can y'all take it outside? We fixed trying to move this meeting on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on our agenda tonight is the Point Washington F eight fourteen C cell tower, request approval by final order. Uh, the project's been reviewed by Renee Bradley. It's a major development application submitted by Matthews and Jones. On behalf of H. Buddy Robinson, Jr., and Stanley W. Connolly, Jr., requesting approval to construct the Southern Link cell tower on approximately point two-five acres with the future land use of Village Center. The project is located approximately eight hundred feet north of Highway ninety-eight right-of-way, east of US three thirty-one, and is identified by the parcel numbers in your package. Uh, we'd like to request that the staff report be entered into evidence, and the applicant is here to present their case.
Okay, thank you. You got more for us?
This is me, short, short. Mr. Chairman?
We don't have enough problem with the notices, do we?
No notice problems. At least none that I'm aware of. Dana Matthews, on behalf of the, it's a, actually a joint application between Bayou Concepts, which is the actual contractor for the cell tower itself, and Southern Link, which is wholly owned subsidiary of Gulf Power, and Gulf Power. This property is being leased from St. Joe Paper Company, um, several miles past Peach Creek, down the, on the north side of the road. Cell tower location's about nine hundred and eighteen feet from Highway ninety-eight. I've got Juliet, Juliet Milam here, um, from Gulf Power, and Clay Brogdon from Southern Link, engineer, in case you wanted to meet him. This, we just brought to show you, this is one of the things that we talked a bit right there about, so to be able to show, um, whether or not you can actually see the cell tower from various locations, going up and down Amherst Parkway, and you can see that you will not be able to do that. This is all raw land, in conjunction, and there's not, um, it's located very close to Gulf Power, um, has that hundred-foot strip. If you look at the staff report, it kinda lays it out for you what it looks like. Bottom line is, staff has recommended approval. Um, there's no, the conditions are standard conditions for FDE, FDEP permits. We accept the conditions from staff. There's no objections, um, or anybody signed up that I'm aware of to speak on this issue today. Um, and, um, it's passed all environmental, South Walton Fire District, um, Geotech, everything, so we're here to answer any questions, if you have them.
Will, will this be just Southern Link, or will there be other people leasing?
There, I'll let Mr. Brogdon speak to that.
Good evening, my name's Clay Brogdon, and I'm the manager of site acquisition for Southern Link. This tower is being constructed for Southern Link as the anchor tenant on the tower, but it will be available for co-location by any other wireless carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile. If they have a desire to co-locate, the tower will be designed to accommodate them.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Personally, I would love to see this go in, because my cell reception is awful back in Point Washington where I live, so... It may be a personal bias of mine.
Well, and to Mr. Roberts' comments, that, that you gotta, that's why it's being proposed in this area, because the cell tower service out there toward Inland Beach is horrible, and they need another tower, and St. Joe is, you know, good enough to lease, lease the property, so we thought that it was a good thing.
Okay, um...
Ms. Milam, do you have anything?
Juliet Milam, I'm the local manager for Gulf Power, and we strongly want this tower for two reasons, safety and communications for our land workers. It's a very dangerous job, and we like to communicate safely, especially during storm restoration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for the, I know we, we're gonna open up public comment. Okay, I don't have anybody sign up, so is anybody in the public that would like to speak?
Yeah, this is also my land, you can't do anything with it. Self-loathing causes cancer. Um, I've been living here, uh, pretty much my whole life. I used to have a bag phone, because you couldn't get reception out here. I, I suffer from it, that's fine. I don't care, because I would rather live in the middle of nowhere than get good reception. Uh, people's priorities are totally screwed up. Uh, all of this technology coming out of China is giving us all cancer. Um, you wanna go faster on the internet, you're basically just going faster to your death. So no, you can't put a cell... So no, you can't put a cell tower right there in the middle of what's, what's left of Eden.
Thank you. Okay, no more public comments? We'll close that section.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, y'all fight over. Did you get them? Cause you got two to pick from on each one.
Danny and then somebody else seconded it, or I seconded it.
I did.
Yeah.
All right, you got them? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, we got, um. Mercy Multiplied Women's Center.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is the Mercy Multiplied Women's Center. This is requested approval by final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. The major development or application was submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of Mercy Multiplied, requesting approval to develop an approximately twenty-two room women's center and associated infrastructure on approximately eleven point six acres with the future land use of Village McHughes. Project's located at twenty-four seven thirty-five US Highway three thirty-one South and is identified by the parcel number in your project. The actual location is right up the street to the right, two parcels south of the entrance to the three thirty-one Sanctuary Apartments. We would request that, should you choose to recommend approval on this, we would recommend that you conditionally approve it, requiring them to go to the design review board before they move forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Cause we still need to have that step in this process.
Okay.
We request the staff report be entered into evidence.
All right, thank you. Advocate?
Good evening. Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. I appreciate you hearing this tonight. This is one project that we're actually really excited about, and I think it's been a popular project for everybody. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. But as Mac said, he did a good description of the property. I brought a couple of figures. This will be the facility that is on three thirty-one on the other side here. The site plan is actually here, and this is a brief description. The facility will front three thirty-one. It's one building that's connected here. It meets all the property requirements. I don't believe there's any outstanding technical issues associated with this project. And we do have representatives from the foundation here. If you guys have any questions for them, but I'll be happy to answer any technical questions you may have.
Any technical questions? All right, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Ladies?
Oh, sure. I apologize.
Can you come up here and sort of get your? They're live streaming. There's millions are watching.
Millions? All right, this is my time.
Reality TV at its best.
Um, I, my name is Brooke Keels, and I'm the executive director of counseling services for Mercy Multiplied. So our facility, we have four homes in the US right now. We began in nineteen eighty-three. In Monroe, Louisiana, we have Nashville, Tennessee, where our corporate offices are, Saint Louis, Missouri, and Sacramento, California. And what it is is actually a free of charge, completely donor funded program that is six to nine months for women eighteen to twenty-eight. So they're dealing with life controlling issues. It can be addiction, eating disorders, some high levels of abuse. And what we do is a discipleship model with really well-trained counseling. So that's just the process for them, and that's what this is. And we keep very top-notch facilities and make sure that everything is very beautiful for the girls, that they're feel very well taken care of.
Who funds the foundation?
It's just completely donor funded. Our executive director, Leah Hayes, might be able to speak to that better than I could. I do the program stuff.
How many beds?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yes.
As far as funding, hi, I'm Leah Hayes. As far as funding, we are eighty percent funded by individuals. It's all donor funded.
And this will be your fifth one?
Yes, this will be our fifth, fifth home.
Is this a faith-based?
Yes, it is a Christian-based program. No, we are not affiliated with any denomination nor church. We are completely, we come alongside and partner with those in Christ.
Anything else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we got any public comments? Talk tonight.
Goy Bowman, I don't understand why this is appropriate for this area. This seems like something that belongs more like in Fort Walton. This is a beach vacation area, not a rehabilitation center. And also, I don't understand why they need to build a new building for this process. Why can't they just buy one of the existing structures that are already here? You know, because the federal government's not gonna allow you to build anything else because we are already built out. This is part of the forest. So this is just an excuse to have a religious thing come in because a church is exempt from all of the rules, although she said she's not affiliated with any particular church. It's a faith-based thing, so that gives her some kind of excuse to tear down the trees in the forest? You're kidding me. This is just an excuse to build something where you're not supposed to build it. So no, this doesn't belong here.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion.
Motion to approve.
Second. You got them, Karen? All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank y'all. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight. The South Walton Commerce Park Lot Thirteen, request approval of final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Baranti. Major development order application submitted by Quartermiller Engineering on behalf of Peddlers Thirty A LLC for construction of three buildings for business, park usage, a gazebo, asphalt parking, and stormwater facility with a future land use of business park on one point five five acres. The project is located on approximately point seven miles on Serenoa Road from the intersection of Serenoa and US ninety-eight within the South Walton Commerce Park. It's identified by the parcel number in the record. We'd request that the staff report be entered into evidence. The applicant is here to present their case.
Thank you. Okay, Advocate?
Yeah, I'm Blake Ferby with Quartermiller Engineering, F U R B E E. And we're here proposing the business park use. There'll be three buildings, various uses, office, warehouse, bike shop type stuff, and.
You said bike shop?
Uh, yes, sir.
Is that where the Peddlers comes from?
Uh, yes, sir, yep.
Just curious.
Yeah, our client has started off selling bicycles and repairing, and he's looking to expand into a different area to kind of open up his area of, of marketing.
Must've done pretty good repairing the bikes.
Yeah, it's apparently that's what, so it seems like.
Maybe we need to go into the business.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But, uh, because we're just here to answer any questions. We've gone through TRC. It went through once before, and then we decided to expand the floor area of the buildings. Didn't change the footprint, just the, expand the amount of area with the mezmin's. And so we went back to TRC a second time, had a review a second time, and got approved. And so we're looking forward to the planning commission's approval. Move forward to the Board of County Commissions meeting. And we've been in coordination with the, Mr. Baranti. On this project, we'd like to fast-track the process to the next week's Board of County Commissions.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anybody got any questions?
None.
Nothing?
No.
All right, all right, we'll open up the public comment portion. Anybody out there that'd like to speak?
Okay, once again, this is my land. Section five of eighteen belongs to me. You cannot do anything there but plant trees. I would also like to point out that since you wouldn't let me talk about Sandestin because I own three quarters of it.
Your future chants on that one is coming back.
Okay, I'll definitely have something to say then. Marjorie Stoneman, Stoneman, the woman I quoted at the last BCC meeting about the rivers of grass. What she had to say about developers was, was that they're only in it for the money, and that's not enough. And what I have to say about developers is this, a developer is somebody that sees something that's beautiful and they just ruin it. Okay, so this is in the middle of the forest. There's no reason there needs to be a warehouse in the middle of the forest. And since it's on my land, you don't have a legal right to do anything with it. So, you know, he can pedal all he wants, but if y'all keep building the way you're building on this island, we're all gonna be pedaling in water when we sink.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public comment portion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Of course.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion approved. We've got a couple of other things we've gotta take care of before y'all go running off. We need to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved, and we need to talk about a special meeting time. Karen, what have you got for us? Yeah, this is what? Comp plan stuff. Y'all see the email she sent about the comp plan?
Yes.
Comp plan amendment, I guess, is going on. So we need a, that's, they, y'all are anticipating that's gonna take us a little while?
Kristen does. She anticipates it taking a while, and she's worried if one of our next regular meetings are as long as tonight.
Yeah. Okay, also, you will send us all the information prior to, so we get a chance to read it and everything?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Teddy did ask that it be either Tuesday or Thursday. Thursdays are all open, and that's our normal order of nights. The only Tuesday level would be the seventeenth, so we need to find out if that works.
March seventeenth?
April seventeenth.
April seventeenth, okay. I'm available.
I'm not.
Yeah, I'm out that day.
Tuesdays are bad.
I have a hearing that's gonna go until at least five.
I'll be down here.
All right, who can come?
That's four of you plus Danny, or plus Teddy?
Yep. So we got five now? We gonna lose two of you?
Yeah, and if my hearing cancels, I'll be here. That'll give us six.
Will that work? Possibly six, but.
Yeah, possibly six.
Our concern was that this is important, and we'd like everybody to be fresh and, so we can present without too much distraction.
Lots of luck.
If that's possible.
I agree, though. That's, that's gonna be a pretty technical thing to have to walk through, so. Yes, five PM. Is that good?
Excuse me?
Do we need to pick another date so that we can all be here?
We'd prefer to have a full board and have everybody's participation, but we understand the difficulty of scheduling a special meeting.
I'm in front of Judge Lewis today. If you can chew on him a little bit, maybe he'll let me go early.
I'm trying not to talk to him as much as I can.
Me too.
I'll answer whatever question he asks.
I mean, if you've got another day you think'll work.
No, you shouldn't miss that.
I would have to check with Teddy, but Mondays are all open. I just don't know what his schedule is.
You mean like the sixteenth or the twenty-third?
Second night, sixteenth, twenty-third, or thirty.
Do we have some on the night of the twenty-fourth?
These are a lot better.
We have BCC in the morning.
Nothing that might, oh, yeah, I guess we could do it on the twenty-fourth. That's actually today.
I can't, I can't be here.
They're saying Mondays are better, or Danny is. Y'all like Mondays better?
I can't be here the twenty-fourth.
We're about thirty.
The twenty-third is Monday of that week.
Did you say the thirtieth?
Twenty-third would be really good. The twenty-third?
That'd be a better date, twenty-third?
Twenty-third would be.
Monday, the twenty-third?
I'm free that whole day.
You are free?
Not that I'm all that important. I'm just free that whole day.
I'm one hundred percent sure I'll be back.
Where you going?
I'm going to Eagles concert before then, and I'm not coming back till.
Well, dang, let's go with you.
May not be coherent when you get back anyway. Can we just have the meeting with him? Go with him and have the meeting?
I'm coming back Monday, but I don't know exactly what time it'll be.
Yeah.
Sorry.
How far are you having to go for that? Where is it?
Birmingham.
Oh. It's not very far.
That's a journey to go in. County can buy tickets. The ninth is not good for me.
Yeah, the ninth's out for me.
Sixteenth is fine.
Sixteenth is good.
I'm good.
I look good right now.
Good for me. Sixteenth might work.
On the calendar, but I don't think it applies to me, so.
I'm in.
September sixteenth a holiday?
It's Patriots Day.
Oh, God, that's a big one for me.
Well, I'm supposed to be in Boston. That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not going to Boston. I'll be here.
Just tax day is the next day. This must be a holiday in Washington DC. I think that's what it is. And that's why tax day is the seventeenth.
So the sixteenth, five o'clock?
We need a motion.
We're just confirming the day right now, so. Is that, does that, does that look good for y'all?
For me, it does for me.
Seems like that's the best date. The only person we don't know about is Teddy right now. Okay, we need a motion.
Motion we, I stashed on your journal.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Motion would set special meeting on April sixteenth starting at five PM.
Second. All in favor? All right, we got it.
Thank you very much.
Now we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So you're gonna let us know for sure? You'll let us know?
As of right now, since you guys have voted on it, we're going to.
Okay. God bless y'all.
Oh, I'm surprised we got finished with this as fast as we did.
Boy, be a commission. Y'all thought it was gonna be fun? There is. You're not getting your check?
I got my check.
Hey, we give you a hundred percent rate.